Are you folks ready to start?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the, uh, want to do the whole.
David Kent.
Here.
Stephanie Halter.
Here.
Peter Julia. Malik Hammond.
Here.
Tom McLaughlin.
Here.
Thank you. We were given a set of minutes that the town has prepared on the September 3rd meeting. Any comments, additions, or deletions?
I just had one. On page five, middle of the first paragraph. It says Kirk responded that it was not any specific testing for junk cars, just standard state water testing. When asked if his, if he, his tenants drank the water, it's just kind of awkward, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's the only one. I don't think it changes it substantively. I think it's just a typo.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
Second.
With the...
With the addition, yes.
Yeah, excuse me.
Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor approving the minutes as elected? Aye.
Aye.
Abstained since I was absent.
Okay. Three in favor and one abstention. We still have the same three applications and we, we adjourned the meeting last month at a point where it was going to see if it was feasible for council for the town and council for the applicant to get together and see if they could resolve a set of conditions that might address the issues that were brought up at the previous meeting. Have, we, we have what our town created.
Correct.
Is there an addition to that?
Nothing at this time, and Attorney Warren is on Zoom.
Zoom? Wonderful. Sir.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's happened relative to you folks and the, the town's list of conditions?
Sure, I'm happy to address it. So, I guess first and foremost, when the consent decree was negotiated with the town, George Kirk felt that all of the conditions necessary to any special exception approval were contained within that decree. And so, understood the discussions that occurred at the last meeting, and I've told Attorney Warren in the letter that he sent, we don't agree with a lot of the recommendations. There are changes that we would submit would be appropriate as to conditions, and I'm happy to go through them. I don't have them...
That's the conditions of the consent decree.
No, no, these, the conditions...
These are the ones that our attorney...
The ones, okay, yeah, okay.
So, the proposed conditions by the town's council, he and I were not able to cross paths, and I do appreciate that he submitted a letter with proposed conditions that the town, he felt, would find appropriate. I'm happy to go through them and go over what changes George Kirk would like to see that would make these conditions acceptable.
Why, sir, were we able to work with town council on that?
Quite frankly, I had three trials during the month. All for the same client, three different docket numbers, a couple of them included different parties, all in Bellknap County.
Okay. What's the board's pleasure relative to that?
And I guess I'd volunteer that rather than have you listen and take notes, I mean, I could go back to my office and type this up and send it in, which would probably be easier for you folks and for us because, and, and quite frankly, for the town's attorney as well to see if he and I reach a consensus on it so that what you have is a, an assented to proposal for conditions for approving the special exception. But I can also go through it right now. There, I don't think they're so voluminous that it would take much time, nor is it all that complicated.
If we were to do that, to allow him to do it with the attorney, we'd have to continue the meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Till the next time.
And, and we're running up against a required decision that we have to make.
What's the timeframe allowed?
Ninety days.
The date of application, is it not?
Mm-hmm, correct.
What was the date of application?
Twenty-fourth. Uh, twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
August 22nd? October, November 22nd would be the deadline then?
I believe that's, I believe that's correct.
Unless there's, is there 31 days in September? Might be the 30, thank you.
I don't know when your November...
But October has 31. Right, so it's the 21st. But we would meet on the first Monday, which is fourth? No, we meet the first Tuesday, the fifth, and that's Election Day?
I don't think that's an appropriate way for us to go. We ought to deal with it tonight if we can.
Okay, wait, so, so we, we've got this from Mal.
We've got this, and he can give us...
Has he seen this? He has seen this?
I think so, yes.
And he's saying he, some of these things he doesn't agree with.
Correct.
That's the biggest argument for... If we're going to look at any outside document, at least it should be mediated there between the two. So, they're saying we would do this, otherwise any...
He would prefer not to have all these conditions.
He would prefer, so this doesn't mean...
Or slight modifications.
Well, like, I mean, I think it's up to us, either way, the attorneys both can tell us, right? And it's up to us to decide what the conditions are if we do approve an application, which we've never said we, you know, we're confined to do.
I'm going to suggest to the board that we allow the attorney to go forward with what he calls the differences that he...
Second.
I think everybody should be able to have their voice heard.
Okay. To that extent, I'm going to reopen the public hearing so that we can have you on the record for whatever it is.
I didn't mean to interrupt, not realizing you weren't, this wasn't still part of the public hearing. I apologize.
Public hearing is open, reopened. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so do all of you have the letter from Attorney Warren?
Correct.
It's probably easiest if I...
And we do have extra copies up here, I think, if anybody in the audience would like one. Malik, can you see them right in front of you?
Document from the left.
Thank you.
Three pages.
I suggest that we allow him to go through the entire letter.
Second.
And with what changes he believes would be appropriate.
Yes.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
All right, thank you very much. So, beginning with conditions applicable to 491 and 495 Tenny Mountain Highway, numbered paragraph one, there is no proposed change to A or to C. And the only change is to substitute for B the following. Vehicles owned by the business or vehicles being serviced by the business in lieu of that paragraph that talks about offered for sale within 60 days after arriving at the property. I'll say that again. So, striking paragraph B and inserting vehicles owned by the business or vehicles being serviced by the business.
So, you would strike out vehicles that will be offered for sale to the general public within 60 days, that whole part?
Yes.
So...
I think it's more captured under A. B appears to be an unnecessary further limitation.
So, you want offered, being offered for sale without any... You, you're getting vehicles that are being offered for sale without any timeframe?
Without a timeframe.
Without a timeframe. Vehicles...
I think there are a lot of new car dealers that would indicate they have an awful lot of new cars that sit on their lot for far more than 60 days. So, then moving on to two, we propose striking two for the following reasons, that it's not just vehicles that are offered for sale to the general public, but Kirk's tire does an awful lot of service work for customers, and those cars are in and out on a short period of time. And so, when they're dropped off, more often than not, they're dropped off at the front of the property. So, for that reason, we'd ask that paragraph two be stricken. Under paragraph three, with the exception of vehicles that have been towed, the applicant shall not store A is fine. Motor vehicles no longer intended for legal use, et cetera. But we'd ask that you strike B. One, George doesn't keep iron, metal, glass, paper, cordage. This is, this is a definition that's taken from the generic junkyard statute. If you note in the special exception that's been submitted, Kirk's towing is asking for a special exception limited to automobiles, not to be considered a general junkyard. So, by virtue of the limitation in the special exception application for each of these three lots, there is no consideration for old iron, metal, glass, paper, cordage, or other waste, or discarded, or secondhand material. Paragraph four, the only addition we suggest is that it read any salvage vehicles as opposed to any vehicles. So, any salvage vehicles and the other conditions are quite fine. Five is quite fine as, as written. Moving on to 540 Daniel Webster Highway, property shall be fenced to screen from view. One thing that George Kirk would point out to you is that just in the last couple of days, two Volkswagen cars at 540 Daniel Webster Highway were, were stripped right down to the frame. And so, George wants the police to be able to see inside his property as they're cruising by. He's had 66 catalytic, catalytic converters stolen from the property. He has put in wood to, if you drive by today, you'd see that there is now wood in there at the gate, so you can't see inside where the gate is. But where the, the trees and shrubs essentially block a lot of the fence, but the police would be able to see and to see activity going on. That has not been screened with wood because really the natural vegetation screens the fence itself. So, we would ask that the screen from view be stricken from the condition under number one for the reasons of the theft that is occurring and has just occurred in the last couple of days. And it appears none of the neighbors noticed what was going on, and the police were never notified until George found it. Under number, paragraph two, this is essentially the identical terms as in paragraph three related to 491 and 495 Tenny Mountain Highway. A is fine the way it is. B, we would ask it to be stricken for the same reasons I explained as to 491 and 495 Tenny Mountain Highway. Yes, sir?
So, these are conditions for 540 DW.
Correct.
You're saying strike two B?
Two B, again.
And what was the final, I know you were talking about the reasoning behind it, but what were you trying to do to paragraph one? Was that a strike completely?
Oh, to strike the screen from view. No, the fencing, there's chain link fences there, wooden slats have been installed where the gate is and to the side of the gate, up to the edge of the forested area. But it's important that there's an opportunity for the police to catch folks that may be and are conducting illegal activity there. Like I said, in the last few years, 66 catalytic converters have been stolen, and just in the last few days, two VWs were stripped down to the frame. So, striking two B in its entirety. Moving on to three, Kirk's towing does not have the authority to drain fluids within 24 hours. I think explained at the last hearing. When, and this is the conundrum, and it's included in the written memorandum I submitted. When a vehicle gets towed in, there are two possible folks that will take control of the vehicle, an insurance company or the owner of the vehicle. And before Kirk's towing can do anything to that vehicle, they have to go through this excruciating process to apply to the state to have it declared an abandoned vehicle if the insurance company and the actual owner are not taking steps to either pay the towing bill or to take responsibility for the vehicle. So, under the law, Kirk's towing wouldn't be able to drain fluids within 24 hours of these vehicles that are towed in. The first opportunity Kirk's towing would have to address fluids would be, well, one, if there's an emergency, it can take action. But otherwise, it can't take action until the state has released the title to the vehicle to Kirk's towing so he can dispose of it. And I'll stand corrected if I'm not accurate on that. I mean, we, I went through, in fact, I went through in the memo. The law wouldn't be onerous if the state had enough warm bodies to process for all towers around the state of New Hampshire, vehicles that get towed and have to be resolved, but they don't. And, you know, ever since COVID, what had been a matter of weeks is now, you know, three months or more to get any kind of affirmative action taken from the state. And the hands of the towor are tied. And when, you know, when the towor goes out, because Plymouth Police have said we have a vehicle here that needs to be towed, and Kirk's does the towing, now their hands are tied because of the state law. Yes, sir?
Don't people come in and say, how much do I have to pay to get my car out of the yard?
It'd be wonderful if that's what everybody did, but there's a not insignificant number of folks who just don't respond. And, and perhaps because it's a college town.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks.
I'll, I'll continue on, and I'm glad to address the questions at the, at the end. So, number four, no differently than paragraph four under 491 and 495 Tenny Mountain Highway. Paragraph four under the 540 Daniel Webster, Daniel Webster Highway, we'd ask that insert salvage. So, every salvage vehicle is what that paragraph reads, and otherwise, there's no objection. Paragraph five, George testified, as I think all of you know, he's been there for over 20 years. Every couple of years, he's had his wells tested. There has never been a problem. And he also told you that there's a reason that he has an interest in maintaining his premises so that there is no contamination to his wells, because at some point, he's going to want to sell his property. And when that time comes, he doesn't want to have to be dealing with a problem with his water on his property. So, for 20 years, his property, his wells have all been clean. He tests them every two years. That's the term he would like contained in paragraph five. The notion of once per quarter might be reasonable if there had been contamination detected. In 20 years, there has been no contamination despite testing every couple of years. And George suggests that the reasonable approach is to continue that every-two-year well test standard. Paragraph six, the issue of grass growing to no more than six inches, he proposed that be stricken completely. Evidently, the town owns an undeveloped lot that is adjacent to his premises, and it's a field. The grass grows to a foot and a half tall. He does maintain his premises. He does cut the grass, but to say it's got to be cut when it hits six inches is an unreasonable standard that really doesn't relate to the pros or cons of the special exception application. And number seven, of course, comply with the consent decree. So, those are the, the changes. They are fairly limited. George and I did go over them in detail, mostly to see how little needed to be changed, quite frankly. And I apologize to council that I was pretty much underwater with, with this three different trials this past month. The good news is that two of them did settle. But on the courtroom steps. So, anyway, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions.
Just to confirm, paragraph three of the DW Highway 540, that was a complete strike? By your desires?
Because that provision would be illegal as it's written.
Yes. No, you explain plenty. I just, I wanted to confirm that it was a complete strike. Thank you.
Well, sir? Thank you, sir.
All right. I think we've made some great progress with the meeting a month ago with Will's proposal and our review of that proposal. And, and so I would urge you to grant as to 491 Tenny Mountain, 495 Tenny Mountain, and 540 Daniel Webster, the limited special exceptions, or special exceptions limited to vehicles only. Thank you.
Having heard what the proponent wanted to change or wanted to do, is there any member of the public that wants to be heard? Sir?
Could you state your name again?
Yes, Bruce Ahearn. I live on the Daniel Webster Highway, and I bought the 540 property. Since I spoke at the last meeting, I have been able to review the Planning Board decision of February 1st, or, excuse me, January 20th, 2000. And in, in looking at that, it was an approval for a vehicle storage... It was approval for construction of vehicle storage lot and office for a towing business. There's no approval there for the site to be used in relation to a service or repair business or sales business. So, to me, that should mean that once the vehicle is, a determination is made on the vehicle, whether it's going to be by the owner, the insurance company, or the state, the vehicle needs to be removed from the lot and is no longer involved with the towing business. The attorney just spoke to the, about the fencing, but the fencing was required on the, by the Planning Board back in 2000 and has never been installed.
Can you talk louder, please?
That's the person on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
I think he's just asking you to speak more into the microphone a little bit louder.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Bruce.
And the other thing is, the last item in the, it's condition five on the Planning Board approval, it says the site will not become a junkyard. So, to me, it cannot become a junkyard without going back through the Planning Board and getting a different approval, because it says right on that, it says right on the plan. It had to be on the plan also that it shall not become a junkyard. And just a couple of things, I've got a letter that includes those things, but just a couple of things about things that the attorney mentioned. I would ask that the board ask whether, when he did his water testing, did he test for volatile organic compounds? Or is it just a standard, you know, bacteria test? Because it's two different tests, done completely differently. The other thing is, as far as the property, within the fence section of the property, I think one of the reasons that they talked about the six inches is because that's part of the standards for maintaining a junk, a junkyard or salvage yard.
Six inches with the grass?
Grass. Is it, if it gets any higher than that, it's tough to inspect for leaks on the vehicles. So, to me, that is a, something that is critical because that's the main thing that I have concerns with, is leaks that will take a while to get down through the ground to the water. And it could be 10, 15 years from now, and it's going to contaminate the water, and we'll have to deal with it. So, I would like the board to consider those items, and I will submit this letter to the board.
Thank you so much, Bruce.
Can you just hold on? Any other members of the public? I'll close the public hearing. It's up to us now to go through application by application, see if we want to grant the application. We want to grant the application with conditions, or we want to deny the application. To do that, we should go through the criteria on each and every application individually.
Don't we do some findings of facts first and then put them in the criteria?
Want to do them by lot, or you want to do them in general?
I would, let's just do them in general, and then we can refer to them in the, what do you call it?
All right, I'm, well, is that...
I think that would save a little bit of time. They are very similar. I think, I think that would save some time to do the finding of facts together.
One question I have.
Yes, sir.
Before we get started with all of this, is this the 2015 site plan that was approved by the Planning Board?
That is.
This is the 2015 verdict?
That's correct. And the 2000 site plan that Bruce was referring to is that one.
One other question, because what was just brought up really struck me when I was reviewing everything.
Can you speak up, huh?
Prior to starting. One thing that also struck me prior to, while I was reviewing everything at home, is what was just brought up as far as item five of the original 2000 verdict or decision that, that it is to be stated, site will not become a junkyard. How does that affect everything being prior decision?
And that's just for...
That would be for the Tenny Mountain lots, I believe.
The Tenny Mountain lots? I thought it was for the Daniel Webster Highway.
That's 540. That's 540.
Doesn't apply for, that only applies to the 540 lot, not the Tenny Mountain lots?
My knowledge, yes.
Okay.
2000, January of 2000, I believe, was the notice of decision.
Okay.
Yeah, apologies. The lot, the partial numbers have changed since then. So the partial number referenced in that notice of decision is no longer the system we use.
But that's the DW. Parcel one, right? Or application one?
How about the?
I'll entertain findings of fact.
Sure.
I've got one for the, one on the Tenny Mountain Highway is probably the busiest town in Roanoke Town.
I think we have to wrestle with the fact that the Tenny Mountain Lot and the lot 540 have been and are operated as a junkyard.
Okay. Sites currently operating as a junkyard?
Have been and are.
Yeah.
Both sites.
We've had quite a bit of public opposition, right? The public concern about all three properties. I do think that there's been a lot of support for Kirk's business as well, Kirk's towing.
Let's separate the issues. I think you're right. The, there's a, there's a need in the community.
Yeah.
For someone to have a place where the police can have their vehicles towed, or abandoned vehicles can be towed.
Correct.
The public need for that.
Correct. There's been a lot of opposition to all three lots.
Being designated as an official junkyard.
What's that?
Opposition as far as being designated as an official junkyard.
As an official junkyard, correct.
Even with stipulations.
Right.
Substantial neighbor opposition relative to the impact that a junkyard next to their property has.
Yes.
On the acquired enjoyment of the property or the value of the property.
All of those. Yeah. They're running a business.
I think that's a separate one, is that there was, there was substantial opinion that this was, what do you call it? It's depreciating. Depreciated in their property value, one way or the other. Hard to argue.
We heard that a lot from the business people, right? And that it impacts their ability to run their businesses, right? As being, looking like a reputable business.
That's their feeling. That's their opinion.
Yes, that's their opinion.
That's what they express to us.
Yes.
Okay.
That's my sense. And then on the DW Highway property, there's safety concerns from the public around water, fluids, running a business in a residential neighborhood, right?
I have, I have one that is sort of contentious. I asked if the, if the property of 540 was in compliance with the planning board decision. And it seems to me that it is not. We've heard evidence that the fence was never completed.
It's not.
Okay.
And that was an original condition of?
That's, that's kind of a good point, that this has always been a tennis game going on.
Over 24 years, right? So it's 2024, this was in 2020, or 20, 2000.
Okay, so the property on Tenny Mountain Highway is currently not in compliance with the?
I was talking about the one on Route 3 South.
DW Highway.
Okay.
It's the 540 DW Highway is not in compliance with the planning board. Around the fence.
I, I don't think, I mean?
And that it's a functioning junkyard, where they said it will not become a junkyard.
Okay.
There's two, two pieces there.
Well, now wait a second here. When this is the decision of February 1st, 2000, is that not the Tenny Mountain property?
Can I look at that again?
No, the 2000? That's DW Highway.
That's Daniel Webster.
That's the Daniel Webster Highway. That's my understanding.
And it's, it's out of compliance two ways. It is a junkyard, and it doesn't have the fence, which was supposed to have been installed.
Correct. It does say, the trailer be moved inside all setback lines. The fence on Route 3 be four feet high, stockade fence, setback 15 feet. The fence on Old Route 3 be six feet high, stockade fence, setback 30 feet. And the fence crossing the property also be a six-feet-high stockade fence.
I think we should make a finding. The applicant and the town have reached an agreement that there'll be a total of 250 vehicles beyond the properties as outlined in the consent decree, which is, across the three sides here, 75 for 491. 540 Daniel Webster Highway, and Daniel Webster Highway, and a 100 for 495 Daniel Webster Highway.
I had down that Daniel Webster Highway lot would be, under the consent decree from the town, would be 75 cars.
Daniel Webster?
Yes.
That's correct.
And the other 175 are divided between those other two lots.
Correct.
175 vehicles.
100 for 495, and 75 for 491.
I think we should make a finding if the applicant found, found that reaching that level was extremely difficult because he has no control over when vehicles.
Come and go.
Come, come to him, and when he can get rid of them.
Correct.
That's the constraint that he has. I think it's important that we, there have been no prior conditions relative to fencing, as I understand it, on the Tenny Mountain Highway.
Correct.
Planning board nor any other board had, which would have been us had we been asked, has placed any constraints relative to, conditions relative to fencing.
Correct. We did have substantial complaints about the appearance of Tenny Mountain Highway.
That's an issue. The public.
Public complaints, yeah.
It was brought up in the testimony that there are some vehicles, some trailers on the property, which aren't construed as vehicles. Therefore, are not considered within the enumeration of, of the numbers that were agreed to.
Yes. And that the town ordinances seem kind of loose on that.
Trailers are not vehicles.
Wait, huh? What definition?
No. They're temporary structures.
Does that, does that include semi-trailers too?
Yeah, that's what he's talking about. Storage units like.
I think if it was stored attached to a truck, that might be different, but then they usually aren't, right? They usually get removed. And there are other businesses that have trailers on their property. They're just not in the front of the property, where they think a lot of them get stored in the back of the property.
Any other findings?
The town has expended considerable resources to enforce some kind of a, out on the highway there, some kind of a compromise to bring down the appearance of it. And now we've spent considerable resources on the legal end.
I'm not going to, I'll, I'll be voting against that when we come to vote, because I don't think that's really relevant. We're here today to deal with what we've got.
Okay, I'll withdraw. That's fine.
I think the reason that this application for the special exception has been made is due to a litigation and brought through with attorney suggestions from both sides.
Maybe you want to say the applicant was motivated to file this application because of the consent decree in the Superior Court?
Yes.
Some nice wording.
This application was a result of the consent decree?
All, all of the applications.
Yes.
All three of them, yeah. Got that, Jessup?
Used to teach shorthand up at the college here.
Oh, that'd be handy.
I'm glad you were this video recording today.
I think we should also describe the other sorts of things. The applicant provides maintenance to vehicles. He sells vehicles. He stores vehicles.
Well, that place was always, you know, tire, an auto shop where he had, did repairs. And surely he sold some cars that just in the past, you know, I don't know how many years that it's just exploded.
We need to have a fact that demonstrates the breadth and complexity of his business, I think.
Mm-hmm, I do. I was going to add a finding that at all three properties, we've had concerns that the properties are not consistent with the neighborhoods in appearance.
That's a good one. I suppose we could talk about a finding that the maintenance operation that he carries on, the applicant carries on, on the Tenny Mountain Highway, involves people bringing their cars and leaving them in front of the building.
Say that one again, sorry.
People drop their cars off to have maintenance done on them, or tires changed, or whatever.
Correct.
And, and they leave them in front of the building.
Yes.
And, you know, the extent that we wish to control the number of vehicles in front of the property is problematic in that regard.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should make a finding relative to what the attorney argued about the state is not, although the statute allows the state to take action in a much speedier fashion so that he could move vehicles off of his property, they simply don't. And that, and that is creating a backlog of vehicles on his property.
Correct.
And that's the process of determining when a vehicle is abandoned. We did have testimony at the last hearing that other states are much more efficient in doing this.
I have to, just on that, that last one, although that is a factor in the symptom, the problem, is that relevant to the decision of granting a special exception?
As a discussion issue, I would suggest that with his agreement with the town, to tow vehicles and off of the highway to tow vehicles, I don't see how he can ever achieve the numbers that they've agreed to of 250 vehicles. Because he has no control over getting them out of there, because he has no control over bringing them in either.
They have to have other properties.
Pardon me?
Either not take the business or, or have other properties.
Yeah?
Besides the three lots that he has, right? His business has grown a lot over the years, I assume, right? Guys, I, I know that the backlog is part of that. I think that's important to acknowledge. I, I tend to, I don't know that that's as much of within our control. I feel like businesses deal with that all the time. All kinds of businesses that deal with the state deal with that backlog. The university, the town, everybody does, with the state having a backlog. And we all continue to find ways to, to run our business, right?
Yeah, we're not, we're talking about limita, limiting the number of vehicles that he have there.
Yeah.
And from all I've heard.
That's not feasible.
That's not feasible.
Correct.
I know, you said earlier.
They did agree to that.
At the hearing, he said, I'm trying to get vehicles out of there, but it's an, it's an impossibility.
I think he did, I would like to acknowledge though, that the last hearing, he said that the numbers are down. So there has been some effort.
Oh, yeah. No question about that.
Yeah.
Dave, he said that this, this is an effort to control, and I don't think that's the right attitude. I think that's what's gotten us with all the lawyers here. We should be making an effort to get compliance. He should want to be a good-looking business out there like the other ones are.
And we want him to be.
Look at the car dealers. That's all we want, is for the place to look like not an eyesore.
Well, I think that's a good finding. The business is an eyesore.
Yeah.
That's the crux of the issue. If he was, you know, had worked up a little bit of green space in the front on the highway, and, you know, kept some cars out there and kind of made it, it used to look good. And so, I don't.
Some of it is the numbers that make it hard to keep it looking good, I think.
I know, but you know something? I don't know as if that's all right. What are the neighbors' rights?
Well, I mean, that's one of the criteria that we have to look at.
It is.
Well, I mean, just like what is, in general, that one banker phoned in, and he said, the neighbors have a right not to have something come over and affect their lot. And I mean, that's, that's pretty sensible.
And we look at one of the criteria, as we go through the criteria.
Yeah.
I think it's important to include that one that was suggested about, it is an eyesore.
I think the neighbors have rights, and you ought to say it. Their property, when we give him. Their property, when we give him, we're taking rights away from the neighbors.
Well, state that as a fact.
Neighbors have rights. Neighbors and the butters have rights too. Yeah, that's my, that's the final fact, number 14.
A lot of the conditions that have been proposed by the attorneys don't really seem to really address
They don't.
how the property looks, especially out on Tenny Mountain Highway. I mean, it does address the fence, but the fence hasn't been built in 24 years, so it's hard for me to say if we approve it as a junkyard now, that that fence would all of a sudden miraculously appear. And then there's no fence or really any mention of anything to address the appearance and the conditions.
Let's go on to a general discussion then, and if another fact comes out, we'll we'll ask that fact be included.
Okay.
If the issue is an eyesore, as you seem to say it is, Tom, and I agree with you, what's the resolution? How do we solve this problem? Because we have a right to put conditions.
Is that our policy, Dave?
Yes, it is. We have a right to put.
To tell him a solution to his business doing so well?
If he wants approval, we have a right to put a condition on that approval which says you will do thus.
It's hard though, because we asked for what that would look like from them, and I don't feel like for the Tenny Mountain Highway, we got any solutions to address the eyesore.
That's true.
We didn't.
And it's not even fencing mentioned.
No.
Ever since we've been talking about this, there's been, there's no change out there. There is never, hasn't been a change in years. It's filled to the max all the time. And then that other little auto parts store, I mean, you know, I see the planning board and, you know, I understand that we gotta eat part of what they did, but they never came to us, well, it was supposed to be a dealership, not a junkyard. And they show lanes of travel in there that are reasonable. And but, you know, I don't know, you're right, it all boils down to be a good neighbor and keep it looking so that your neighbors aren't pulled down by the appearance of your buildings.
Let's discuss.
This is commercial, so if not residential.
Thank you. Let's discuss the specific criteria. We'll discuss them one at a time, how's that?
That'd be great. Are these in the applications? Is that where they are?
They're the same in all the different applications.
Yes.
I gotta find mine.
This is for the special exception, correct?
Right. So number one, the proposed use is allowed in the ordinance by a special exception. That's true for all three, is it not?
Correct.
We're not voting on these.
We're just discussing.
Just discussing. Explain how the specific site is an appropriate location and adequate size for its use.
I mean, in some ways.
Which, are we going through all of them or one by one?
No, just for one's.
We're gonna go through all five of them.
All five of the, correct, good.
This is for five. Just a discussion.
All three properties, so this is just.
Oh, I see, oh, I see.
All three properties, this is just a discussion, this isn't a vote. So my feeling here is that it somewhat is appropriate for the business aspect, right? If you think about customers coming and going, bringing in their cars for repairs, and even a towing business, right? Is the lot adequate size? I think that's kind of the issue with the number of cars that they have, right? I mean, how large is the lots altogether? I don't know the square footage of them or the acreage.
I would question if DW. Back to my point.
Please.
I would question that DW Highway parcel is of adequate size.
For 75 cars or for?
For 75 cars, yeah. To be stored there, I think that is grossly over undersized for that amount.
And that Daniel Webster Highway is all residential around it. I mean, he's a nice, you know, farms and homes there.
Is that lot 1.7 acres? Is that what that is?
It should be in the staff report for each acreage of the lot. So Daniel Webster Highway is 1.75.
It says on the map here, it's 1.7 acres. 7,300, 200 square, well, it's 1.7 acres, 73,200 square feet is what I see on the map.
And it's got a particular configuration as a triangle.
Yes, it does.
Which, and with the setbacks, it gets a little bit more diminished from that. Either way, I mean, the thing that I see is that it is all residential. I mean, and this is just.
I think that's a different, I think.
Speak up.
What I see is that it's all. What I see is that it's all residential properties down here, in this immediate neighborhood. And it looks like you got like one, two, three, four, five, six, within, you know, a couple hundred feet.
I think that really speaks to the number three, Tom. The character of the area, where I think this one is just adequate size. So really it's saying, is 75 cars adequate for 1.7 acres, right?
I don't know, I could do the math, I mean, cars are 10 by 20, you know?
I mean, if you think about it, take our parking ordinance, right? Like, what do we have for requirements around parking?
75% coverage.
75% coverage.
They've got a trailer on this lot too, don't they?
Right, I know, and I feel like we're not taking into account the trucks, yeah.
No, I mean, they've got an actual living trailer.
I think they do, yes.
Let's move on to number three. We've got two different neighborhoods here.
Yeah, we do.
They have to be considered different, one from the other.
Okay.
Blanket statement will not work, it'll cover both.
Well, the only one that I would say that that I think is a blanket statement that could cover both would be that we had complaints around it not fitting the character with the neighborhood on all three lots. That's my blanket statement that I think would fit for all three lots.
Okay, and if you're gonna say that, you should probably say, you know, exactly why it doesn't fit that character.
Yeah.
For the one down South Plymouth, I would say because it's a very residential area. For the one on Tenny Mountain Highway, I would say because it's all good-looking commercial right around and.
It's very professional.
Very well-presented commercial properties.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the one on the DW Highway, I think a fence could go a long way for that property. And I think one could go a long way out on Tenny Mountain Highway as well, right? But I think that that, we haven't seen that historically been put into a place, nor have we seen the eagerness or the willingness to comply with that currently.
We had mixed testimony relative to whether they wanted to have the one on Tenny Mountain Highway as a neighbor or not. The question is how to ameliorate the eyesore issue that Tom brings up.
Correct. Because it doesn't fit in with the character of the neighborhood.
They all agreed it was an eyesore, from what I can recollect.
Yes. And there are businesses that, that take care of cars that manage that differently. That we don't get complaints in town, not quite to the size of Kirk's, right? And I know he is the only towing place, so I think that does make him a little bit different. But there are other companies that are, you know, working on cars that have issues.
We had it with the Ford dealership. They wanted to have a separate sign, remember, and we said, "No, you have to follow the regulation."
Yeah, and they just seem to manage their properties differently.
That was visible from the front, and we were concerned about that.
Yeah.
All right. The nuisance factor.
I think for me, the challenge here is the 540, was it? The Daniel Webster Highway property.
Members, the public can watch on YouTube. Other people are in the Zoom, but if folks are gonna be disruptive, they can watch on the YouTube and not speak up.
It's definitely inappropriate. I would say, David, for this one, my biggest concern is the fluids from vehicles. We had some concerns from neighbors, especially on the Daniel Webster Highway property. We didn't have people speak out about that on Tenny Mountain Highway as much.
True.
I think that that's largely because it's probably public water on Tenny Mountain Highway, right? And people aren't getting their water from there. So the concern, I think, comes mostly with the property down on Daniel Webster Highway.
Can you just mute everybody who's online? This is not a public session right now.
Correct. Yeah, let's see if we can do that. I know, Jonathan, do you have that capability?
Yeah, I can take care of that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much. And they have no ability to unmute themselves?
I mean, they can, but I can just be in it again if they continue to be disruptive.
And the two who were disrupting are in the waiting room.
We don't, we don't need to listen to anybody from the public at this point.
If you have a problem again, just let me know.
Okay, so what do you mean, what is a nuisance? Explain how there will be no nuisance? That's kind of odd, because it seems like the junkyard could be a nuisance. You know, I mean, what, outside of having a circus next door to you on the lot? I mean, having a junkyard and cars coming and going all night long and all day long, and then just dumping them wherever they are, and they're all cranked up and.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I know it's a needed business, I'm totally sympathetic to that. And I think that he could have taken some kind of measure, like quickly when this all started happening, to make the front look good and move the confusion a little bit out back and then work on that. But there's just no kind of a.
So what I hear there, Tom, is a little bit more character of the area. I think for Tenny Mountain Highway, there's a lot of traffic that comes and goes from that road. And I think that that's not a hazard right now. I think it's really just the fluids that we've heard from the Daniel Webster Highway property.
Okay.
I don't know that I hear that it's a hazard on.
That's the second half of that.
What's that?
That's the second part of that. The first is no nuisance.
No nuisance, so.
The second part is no hazard.
Is nuisance though, that it's unsightly? Or is that just out of character with the area? Like, what do you mean by, what do we mean by nuisance, right?
Yes, and it's halfway between question three and question four.
Four.
There are things which are a nuisance.
Because they're unsightly?
Because they harm the neighboring properties.
That's right, because they go from, they go over the border, like loud music. And there can be visuals too, I mean.
The banker talked about having people come.
Okay, yes, they do have people come, yeah. And everybody did express that they wanted Kirk's to be in compliance and that they've been a good neighbor. We did hear that.
Number five is kind of interesting because it's it is a burden on the town not to have a towing service.
That's true. I know, I just, I I really feel that they that the squeeze is, in a way, it's like somebody saying, you know, he's saying, "I've got too much business." And yet, when other businesses get too much business, they expand or they get, you know, they get under control, they don't just let it blow over onto the neighbor's property and, you know, that's part of it, that he's blaming his success for this infringement on the neighborhood. That's what it sounds like to me. I mean, I know the state and everything is a viable reason for this, but I don't know as if it's really an excuse.
Can I add, Joseph, one more thing? I think if you mute your computer, that wouldn't allow anybody to come through. And we would just need to make sure we unmute your computer again if we wanted to hear questions from the audience on Zoom.
Sure.
So that would help.
Okay.
I think there usually is just, you know, a toggle button.
Okay.
Do you know how to do that?
Looks, I believe I am.
Okay.
I hope so.
We'll see. I just heard it, I thought of it when I heard the ding ding, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So number five is not quite as easily as one might consider. The town does have a need for that. It would be a burden not to have a towing service.
Correct.
I agree.
It is though, and I still bring this up, and I know our attorneys gave, told us we shouldn't pay attention to this, but it is a burden on the town to supervise the compliance for this property. It continues to be.
I agree with that. And, yeah. Is it time to go back and review and vote on the facts?
Sure. Are we gonna do a property by property, or are we gonna do them together?
I think we should identify, if we do a fact, whether it's for this property, that property, or both properties.
Okay.
Get that, Joseph?
Sure.
Let's go.
All right.
Perfect, there we go.
Turn that back on too.
If we want to take questions from the audience, we can turn that back on.
So fact number one, Tenny Mountain Highway is the busiest road in town.
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Aye.
We have to vote on all of these facts?
I believe it is.
Heaviest traffic, for sure.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's found.
Tenny Mountain Tenny Mountain Highway Lot and Daniel Webster Highway Lot have been and are operated as junkyards.
True.
Yep. I believe it's a fact.
Yep.
I would agree.
Unanimous?
Yep.
Okay, it's unanimous.
There was quite a bit of public opposition on the three properties being designated as junkyards.
That we approved a special exception, is that what you mean by that?
As, yes.
Yes.
Granted a special exception.
Granting the special exception, yes, that is true.
I got one, there's a need in the community for a place to take junk.
We're gonna get there, Tom.
We'll get there.
I thought that he got just the opposite.
Want to read what we got there? You amended it.
Quite, there has been quite a bit of public opposition on the three properties being granted a special exception as junkyards.
That a fair statement?
Fair.
Yes.
Yep.
Unanimous again.
There is a need in the community for a place where abandoned vehicles can be towed.
I agree.
Yes.
True.
Well, I think you gotta enlarge that a little.
Well, and what do we mean by community, right?
First off, it's not just abandoned vehicles. It's also broken-down vehicles or vehicles that need repair. So it's not just abandoned vehicles, it's all the different kinds of vehicles that he might tow. Were you in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
There was significant testimony from the neighborhood on the impact of a junkyard on their quiet enjoyment of the use of their properties.
Can anybody read that?
Yeah.
There was substantial testimony from the neighbors on the impact of the junkyard on their quiet enjoyment of the use of their properties. There was substantial testimony from the neighbors on the impact of the junkyard on their quiet enjoyment of the use of their properties.
I don't know that that's how I worded it.
It's the visual impact, is it not?
I said it just wasn't consistent with the neighborhood. Is that one that we have somewhere else?
Finding facts, no.
Yeah. I think the quiet, I think that that... I don't know that I heard that it's disrupting the quietness, it's more visual.
It's visual, the word visual's got to be in there.
Yep. I didn't hear anybody complain about noise.
Want to read what you finally came up with?
Sure, so there was substantial testimony from the neighbors on the visual impact of a junkyard on the use of their property.
Fair enough.
Yep.
That a fair statement?
Correct.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
All right. Some business owners in the neighborhood stated that they feel the junkyard would impact their ability to run their business.
I think that that applies to 491 and 495 Tenny Mountain Highway.
I agree with that. That one applies to the Tenny Mountain Highway. Do we all agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. And it's unanimous based on the Tenny Mountain Highway? The impact from the others had to do with the water table and the...
Correct. Yes.
The next one is, there were safety concerns from the Daniel Web... Regarding the Daniel Webster Highway property impacting the water and residential neighborhood.
Correct.
I think, can we put the word well in there?
Well water.
That's a good addition.
Is that a statement that we want to adopt as a fact?
I said yes.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
540 Daniel Webster Highway is not in compliance with the planning board approval as it's operated as a junkyard and due to the fencing not being in place as approved.
That's true.
Okay. I've got to go back to the question I asked before. The planning board approval said will not be operated as a junkyard, did it not?
Mm-hmm.
So this should also include that the approval said it would not be operated as a junkyard.
Says it right on the map, too. Says it right on the map.
Yeah. What's written in the decision?
Site will not become a junkyard. It's funny.
So 540 Daniel Webster Highway is not in compliance with the planning board approval as it's operated as a junkyard due to the fencing not being in place as approved. And with the note that the planning board approval said that the site will not be operated as a junkyard.
Fair statement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're in agreement on that.
The applicant and the town have agreed on a total of 250 vehicles on the three properties, 75 on 491 Tenny Mountain Highway, 75 on 540 Daniel Webster Highway, and 100 on 495 Tenny Mountain Highway.
Agreed. And this was, maybe an addendum, that this was part of the consent decree in the Superior Court.
That's a good part, Dan.
The applicant and town have agreed on a total of 250 vehicles on the three properties, 75 on 491 Tenny Mountain Highway, 75 on 540 Daniel Webster Highway, 100 on 495 Tenny Mountain Highway. This was a part of the consent decree resulting from the Superior Court case.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Yes.
The applicant has found that reaching that level of vehicles is difficult as he is constrained on his ability to get rid of vehicles, or I guess I could say dispose of vehicles.
Yep.
Because of state regulations? Do you want to add on that, or state processes?
It's a state failure, actually.
State what?
It's a state failure. The regulation's fine if the state...
The state isn't following through on their commitments, right? Or their processes.
Anything to add because you can't get designation as an abandoned vehicle from the state in a timely manner?
Hey, this is all going good, but are we going to stay past 8:30?
I can't hear you, Tom.
Are we going to stay past 8:30? That debate happens at 9 o'clock. Can we adjourn at 8:30?
What debate?
So?
Huh?
Vice versa.
This is more important than that.
What was everybody's response to that?
What's that?
What did they respond about that?
I don't know.
Okay. Did you respond to me?
Tommy?
Tom's requesting...
I asked if we can adjourn at 8:30 so that we can go watch the debate.
And I'm going to say no unless the board votes to adjourn, but we'll have to have a...
I think we should try to finish, if we can.
So there were no prior conditions placed on fencing for the Tenny Mountain Highway property from either the zoning board or the planning board?
That never was before the zoning board.
From the planning board.
Right, from the planning board. It's never come before ZBI, it's my knowledge.
An accurate statement?
Yep.
Unanimous.
There were substantial concerns from the public about the appearance of the Tenny Mountain Highway properties.
Agreed.
I would say all properties.
Yeah. I think Mr. Ahern was also talking about the same thing.
Yes. Ahern and his wife spoke last week as well.
That's a fact, is it not?
Yes.
So there were substantial concerns from the public about the appearance of all three properties.
Unanimous.
There were testimony, there was testimony that some trailers on the property are not vehicles and thus are not included in the agreed-to number of vehicles permitted on each property.
That was the testimony.
Yeah. I did hear some concern from the public around the trailers, right? And when we talked about it, that that didn't seem to be included in the number of vehicles, because they're not vehicles, it's temporary storage.
Do you agree with that fact?
Yes.
I do. Tom?
Yeah.
Yep.
The town has expended considerable resources to enforce the... To enforce the agreement to address Tenny Mountain Highway concerns, to address concerns on the Tenny Mountain Highway property.
I think all three properties, probably.
Tommy?
All three properties.
Is it really relevant?
I don't think so.
I don't either.
Oh, that was withdrawn, apologies.
Okay.
Thank you. The applicant was motivated to apply due to a consent decree in a Superior Court case relating to all three properties.
I think we have the consent decree already mentioned. I think this one adds that the applicant was motivated to apply, right? And is that something that we need as a finding a fact?
That's a fact, is it, Tom?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's found.
The applicant also maintains, sells, and stores vehicles.
Yes.
Fact?
Yes.
It's towing, sales, and repair, right?
Stores.
I think is what I saw in their application.
Stores and tows vehicles?
Tows, sales, and repair is the language they use in their application.
Next.
You're welcome.
On all three properties, the board has heard concerns that they are not compatible with the neighborhoods in terms of appearance.
Agree?
Yep.
Yes.
Agreed. That's a fact.
The vehicle maintenance operation on the Tenny Mountain Highway property involves customers dropping off cars and leaving them in front of the building.
Yeah, that was the testimony.
Yes.
Okay, it's found.
The applicant's attorney argued that the state could allow for vehicles to be removed more quickly, but is not doing so, which has caused a backlog, which is in the process to designate a vehicle as abandoned.
That was the argument. That's found.
The business is an eyesore.
Yep, we agreed on that. That's all three.
Sorry?
That's all three properties.
All three. Twenty-one, the neighbors and abutters have rights.
All three properties. Okay. Tom joked yourself.
I think they do.
Oh, we're bumping up against bedtime, I think.
I'll agree.
That was the last fact that I have recorded.
Okay.
Thank goodness.
We proceed to go through the three applications?
Sure.
Start with the... On the agenda, they're in the order of 540 Daniel Webster Highway.
Okay.
The first criteria, it's allowed by the ordinance as a special exception.
True.
True.
That's true. Explain how the specific site is appropriate location and of adequate size for the use.
I don't think it is for the one.
You don't?
No.
Stephanie?
Well, I think we're voting for the 75, right?
Second one, yeah.
For this one is 75 cars.
That's correct.
Yes. So 75 cars on this lot, appropriate location and size for a junkyard. I mean, it is a residential neighborhood, I feel like that comes later. Appropriate location, it is on kind of a more main highway. It is in 1.7 acres.
Think of this, if it were...
Which one, the 1.7 was found itself in the town?
That is where we're talking.
DW Highway.
Yeah. This is Daniel Webster, DW Highway.
I can go this way, if there were only 75 cars or vehicles.
Yes.
And if it were properly screened, would it be an appropriate place to have that operation?
I would say true.
The neighbors are not going to tell you that.
I think if we put those two conditions on it, it satisfies, that's my view.
Yeah.
It satisfies number two.
They said that they can't do that because the cops, the police can't see the...
There's other things people can do, they can install a CCTV.
That's an enforcement issue.
That's an enforcement issue. There's other things that businesses do to moderate that. That's not our concern, right? I think our concern is to address the issues.
Then?
If the condition was the fence.
With the two conditions.
And 75 cars.
Seventy-five cars, and with the fencing that was originally to be installed.
I think that's true.
Okay. The third one, will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use is located. We're dealing with Daniel Webster Highway South.
Yes. So there were some conditions, I think, that would address some of the concerns of this. The fence, one. Number two, I would think, the water testing, right? Oh, no, not that's for number four. I think the condition that would address it mostly here would be the fence. Would it be enough to address the concerns? I think that's what people need to decide on. Is the fence enough if we put a condition of the fence? Is that enough to address the character of the area?
Good, has some perspective here.
Malik, do you have a thought?
Well, first off, earlier, I had raised question if that was appropriate size. I want to make clear, I was confused about the location and realize where it was. I was originally thinking of that it was in an application for the Main Street Kirks, which it's not. So that's clear.
The Main Street, you're meaning Tenny Mountain Highway?
Yeah, station.
Oh, up on...
Totally unrelated to any of these applications.
Okay.
That was in my mind when I was, and I thought 75 was absurd for there.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
It's all much clearer for me now.
Because we're further down.
Yeah.
Okay.
However, what I do want to make, I...
So did you vote true on the second?
To the size, yeah, it is. However, what I really have a question about is the original decision from 2000 that specifically says on number five shall not become a junkyard, where that, from my understanding, would eliminate this specific application, irrelevant of the other twos.
Because the planning board has already committed a plan, as you're saying. So to address that concern, could we say that the application has to go back before the planning board?
Well, my take on it is that it never should have become a junkyard.
It never should have, no, that's true.
It never had permission to become a junkyard.
It's true.
And I think the neighbors had a reasonable expectation it wouldn't be a junkyard. The planning board did.
You think they're for the character of the area, then, because the planning board has said...
To protect the character of the neighborhood.
To protect, okay. I agree with that.
I agree with you, Malik, on that one.
Okay.
How do we, how do we all stand on that?
I agree with you.
So the answer there would be no.
Do we need to do a...
I think we have to put the reason in there.
With the planning board decision.
Getting this? Yeah. The planning board never allowed a junkyard. The neighbors never expected or had no right to... Had, should not have had the expectation it would become a junkyard.
They had no opportunity to protest it being a junkyard.
Never complied with the conditions of the approval. Therefore, the answer to that question is no. Okay. Number four.
Agreed. Right, do we need to do a roll call vote on that?
We've got to vote on this.
I'm going to say...
Yes?
False.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Number four, that we know nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
So I think with water testing, that could address that. But I think that there is, with the well water in that community, is some serious hazards. And the applicant has said that they're not allowed to drain, there's no mechanism to drain vehicles. So I think that that would really make this property not a great site for that. Not a great site for that. I think public safety is...
Yeah, he's got another catch-22, you know.
So number four would be a no, and it would be because the applicant cannot drain fluids from the vehicle, was the testimony. The neighbors were concerned about contamination of their wells. And there also is a visual nuisance.
Agreed. Which I think fencing, maintenance of the property could address some of that, but it hasn't.
All right. Number five, how will the use will not place an excessive undue burden on the town services and facilities? Primarily, what they talk about there is water and sewer and...
But I think the...
Road.
Enforcement component that's being requested or offered. So with the applications, they said could check it continuously. But that's a burden on enforcement.
Okay. Do we all agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, too.
All right. That's a no, because the enforcement in the past has not been feasible, although it's constantly in the attention of the town. All right, let's go forward then with the same questions as, we have two more applications.
Do we want to make a motion? I think we need to vote on this one first.
There is a... And there is one more criteria.
Sorry, sorry. I'll turn the page over. Explain how there would be no significant effect resulting from such a use upon the health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which it would be located.
Well, I think we've heard that it has, right, and that there are concerns about safety in the neighborhood.
I think there's a health issue with the water is a concern.
Potential.
I think we put some of, when we were answering number four, we were actually, should have been addressing six.
Could have gone to number six. You can reiterate what we said in four. So you feel this is a no?
Correct.
No, Tom?
No.
Malik?
Number six.
Okay, the number six. Let's vote therefore on the, on the outcome of the application for-
So would you like me to make a motion to deny the special exception for the property on 540 Daniel Webster Highway?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? It's unanimous. That application is denied. We now go to 491 Tenny Mountain Highway. Is proposed use allowed in the ordinance by special exception?
Yes.
Yes.
We can all agree on that, yes. Unanimous. How is a specific site in appropriate location of adequate size for the use?
I believe it is.
You think it is?
It's on the busiest road in town. I can handle the traffic coming and going. I don't know exactly how big that lot is. I haven't seen that. Did anybody make note of how big?
If it were constrained to the number that was agreed upon, would it be of adequate size and a proper location?
Yes. I would say yes.
Yes.
I'd say yes. The answer would be yes, provided that the condition of the number of vehicles agreed to was-
This one is 75.
Not there.
For 491?
One seven five. No, wait a minute.
No, this is, this is 491. This is 75.
Seventy-five vehicles. So that would be a condition for that approval. Explain how the use is developed will not adversely affect the character of the area for which it proposed use will be located. I think this is where the public testimony-
Comes in.
Comes in.
Yes. I think it does affect the character of the area. We definitely heard a lot of public testimony around that. And there's no, no addressing that. My concern is really in the conditions provided by the two attorneys. There's no movement on addressing, like, making it fit into the character of the area.
How about the neighbors, if we vote no, the neighbors felt this was an eyesore that negatively affected their property?
Yes.
So if you include that, would you say that that's correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Malik?
Yes.
So it would be a no, based on that finding. Four, how will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
The nuisance is the eyesore.
Pardon me?
The nuisance here is really the eyesore, right?
Yeah.
It's just that it's not fitting into the character of the neighborhood.
Well, the board's found that this is an eyesore.
But the nuisance to vehicles or pedestrians, right, so it's like people walking, people driving. I don't see this as a nuisance to vehicles or pedestrians.
Is that a yes then?
I think this one's a yes for me.
Malik?
I would agree with that.
Tom? Okay, the answer, that's yes. Use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities?
I think it's just the-
There again, the enforcement.
The enforcement.
It's an enforcement problem. I'd vote no to that. How would you folks?
Yes.
No.
Will that place, yes, no, it will, it will place-
For enforcement, yes.
Okay. Explain how there be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood?
The welfare of the neighborhood isn't going to be served well by having a neighbor who doesn't.
But the pub, the general welfare, though, you could argue, could be us having a towing company in town, right? That we do need that as a viable business. It does serve a good public good.
It does.
It does. So I'm going to say yes for this one, but I think the no for me for this property is really around the not fitting in with the character of the neighborhood.
I agree with what you're saying, Steph.
I do think that it's-
It should be a yes because it serves a needed function in the community.
It does. It serves a needed function, and I think that people have expressed a lot of desire to have this business in our community, and I think that people just want it to, um-
Malik, do you agree with that?
To fit in.
I agree.
Okay, Tom? I think word general, I think, is-
I think general.
You know, if you were talking about this with a limited number of cars, the front end of the place looking good, you know, that'd be fine, but this hasn't changed, and I don't see it changing.
I just think that falls under number three, the character, right? I think, think where it falls.
The welfare of the neighborhood, I mean, all those guys.
But what's defined is welfare, right? I think our public welfare, people need help, like when they're out on the roads, they need to be towed, right? That is a service.
Proper screening were provided.
For number six?
And the town needs the service.
Okay, I agree.
So that's a yes. With the condition of proper screening and the fact that the town needs the service, the answer to number six would be yes.
By proper screening, you mean like a fence visually?
Right, fencing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Some, some kind of major cleanup of the property, yeah, with a buffer.
I'd add on to that a minimum of six foot or seven foot or eight foot screen. Pardon me?
Eight foot.
I know, it's, the hard part is, is the way that property is.
Okay, so that would be a yes, provided for conditions. The exception-
Can I ask?
For vehicles, is the other one, is the next one any different?
Can I ask one question here?
Sure.
Is there a reason why we haven't made it a condition for them to have a site plan review by planning board? Is there a reason why they haven't gone before planning board for this?
People have a choice over whether to go there first or come here first.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's interesting to me that the 540 Daniel Webster Highway went before, but the Tenny Mountain properties did never, never had.
Tenny Mountain Highway just evolved, I think.
Yeah. Because usually-
Are we ready to vote on this application?
Yes. Well, because we've said no to some of these criteria, I'll make a motion to deny the application as written-
Second.
For 491 Tenny Mountain Highway.
Second to deny the application. All in favor of the motion as made?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous among the group. The exception of number of vehicles stored, is anything different on the 495 Tenny, Tenny Mountain?
No. No. I think that's the same.
You want to make a motion relative to that?
I'll make a motion to deny the application for 495 Tenny Mountain Highway.
But you've got to change the number of vehicles.
To 100 vehicles, deny that application for 100 vehicles.
I'll sack it out. Motion's been made to deny, to deny the application, subject to the same conditions of the other one. Based on 100 vehicles. You agree with that?
Most of you adjourned, huh?
We haven't voted on.
We have to vote. Yes.
Yes.
Aye, yes.
It's unanimous. Uh, where did my agenda go?
Where we going? We just wanted to make sure we had new business.
Any unfinished business?
None on my end, none for me.
Any new business? I'm, meeting's adjourned.
All right, here we go. Thanks a lot.